6.4 Item. 9:45 a.m. Consideration of Presentation by North Coast Opportunities NCO on the Lake County Home Hardening Program is my great pleasure to invite you up here to present on this program that will fundamentally change one of our communities as a pilot and hopefully spread beyond the rest of our county. So come on up and have a seat and maybe sit on the side. Marcus is helping us out with our tech this morning. Oops. Thank you, Marcus. Hi, everybody. Remember to get closer to this. Yeah, you could just kind of pull it in front of you. Well, she's getting set up. My name is Diana Farnoy. I'm the Program Manager for the California Wildfire Mitigation Program, also known as the Home Hardening Grant.
And my name is Madam Dacina. I'm one of the project coordinators working in the Calceville Riviera area with Diana.
So first and foremost, we just want to thank you for your time today. I know you guys' Tuesdays are very, very busy. The county has been just a tremendous partner for this project. We definitely would not have been able to get to this point without pretty much everybody's support. Big shout out to Jessica Pyska for helping us from the grant writing process and support all the way through. Also would like to thank Terry Logston, Maria Turner, the Planning Department. Just everyone has been just a tremendous support. So thank you. All right, next slide. So this is a $22 million FEMA grant in partnership with CALOES, CAL FIRE, and like I mentioned, the County of Lake. We're really excited about this grant primarily because there are so few communities chosen. In fact, we were the third community chosen out of five now. And what's really unique about this program compared to some other FEMA support is FEMA comes in after the fact. FEMA is really thinking differently about natural disasters, the fire world alone. And so this grant is primarily focused on prevention. And we are preventing wildfires through mitigation, defensible space, ignition-resistant retrofit measures on homes. And this really exciting pilot program is condensed down into the Calceville Riviera Association. Now FEMA's goal is to collect data after this three-year program is completed in all five of these communities and hopefully open it up to other communities all through the West Coast. Our local goal, can you go back? Our local goal is to harden 500 homes in the Calceville Riviera Association. And this area was chosen primarily for the exact reason why everyone is thinking now. Lake County has a high risk of fire severity and our socioeconomic indicators here in Lake County. So this particular demonstration site was chosen as a Cobb Mountain resident, I thought, why isn't it happening in Cobb? Why not downtown Clear Lake? We have all these pockets of vulnerable areas here in Lake County. But when CAL FIRE really broke it down, it really made a lot of sense. And basically, they chose that area because of the population density. Now, our efforts, our home hardening efforts will be maximized with homes that are built so close together. And so the goal is to really achieve this cluster resiliency strategy. Basically, the premise is if my home is hardened and I have a good amount of defensible space around it, my neighbors is also, and so on, and so on, and so on, until you have this whole community of hardened homes that makes that whole community safer. Another reason why the Calceville Riviera was chosen was because those vulnerable exits in and out. I don't have to tell anybody in this room that that's scary. There's also high vegetation that surrounds that community and high afternoons, that high afternoon winds that pick up every afternoon. So I've been with North Coast Opportunities for about four years now. And every program that I have worked on has been able to focus on the vulnerable populations. And this grant really is no different. So this particular grant, like I said, it's a little bit different than other FEMA grants, but it really does focus on the vulnerable population in making it nice and easy for everybody to be a participant in this project. So the first, first item is the homeowner has to actually apply for the program. We have really fine-tuned the online portal to make it really nice and easy for homeowners to just walk through it. It takes roughly maybe 10 or 15 minutes for them to get applied and for us to be able to access their application. Once that application has been received from us, we go in and we do a thorough home assessment. In fact, Myra is our lead assessor. And she goes out there on site and takes about two, two and a half hours. And she identifies what vulnerabilities this home has. So we know exactly what retrofit measures to perform and what defensible space measures to perform. We communicate that directly with the contractors. So again, make it nice and easy for the homeowner to be a participant. They don't have to talk to the contractors. We know exactly what retrofit measures to convey to them. And then we also pay the contractors directly. So it's not a rebate program. They don't have to wait for reimbursement. And so again, just makes it nice and easy. We have a neighboring community that has a FEMA grant with roofs. And those homeowners actually have to pay upfront. They wait for reimbursement. As you all know, everything's getting really expensive. Could cost anywhere between $30,000 and $40,000 for a roof anymore. So we don't put, we don't leave that on our homeowners to have to take on that responsibility. Every home is eligible up to $40,000 in retrofit measures. And for folks who have an at or below their moderate income for the area, there is no share of cost. Now, folks who do have a higher income cost may have a small share of cost, but they're not ineligible to be a participant in this program. So speaking of the defensible space and retrofit measures, Myra is going to talk a little bit more about what we're actually doing on these homes.
Thank you. Can we have the next slide, please? Thank you. So one of the goals of the Home Hardening Program is to manage the fuels around the house. By creating defensible space and making the structure stronger, we get the couple approach to reduce the chances that a house would catch on fire if there was a wildfire coming to the area. So defensible space refers to the 100 feet that surround the structure. And the idea is to mitigate the vegetation as it gets closer to the home. So if there were to be a fire, it would hopefully die down before it gets to the house. Those 100 feet are divided in three zones. Zone zero is what's closest to the house is the first five feet. That's also called the zero ignition zone. And that is where we're going to put the biggest efforts to have absolutely nothing combustible that close to the house. That way, we can avoid flames getting all the way to the structure. And then we have zone one, which is the following 30 feet, and zone two that goes from 30 to 100 feet. In that area, we're going to really be looking at the vegetation and try to break it up so that if something catches on fire, it doesn't have continuity to go again all the way up to the home. Can I have the next slide, please? And then we have here a few of the home hardening retrofit measures. I want to mention that 90% of the home fires start by embers. So there is some measures that are specifically for to protect the home from embers and some others that are go evolve and beyond, and they want to harden for flames. All the homes in this program are going to be hardened for embers. And then they're going to be evaluated. If we're not able to mitigate the fuels coming up to the home, then we're going to do a harder effort and we're going to do some other retrofits to protect for flames. So hardening for embers, we're going to look at all the gaps around the home on the roofs, around the walls. That's usually where embers can find like a nice host to start a fire. So we're going to close gaps on the roofs and we're also going to do fire caulking when that's an applicable thing to do around the walls in the house. We're going to reduce the vent screen sizes to an eighth of an inch to reduce those embers that get to get that close to the house. We're going to put gutter covers to avoid debris from accumulating in the gutters. And another thing we're going to be looking at is the garage doors. Those are very famous for having gaps all over them. So we're going to do our best efforts to seal those, those garage doors. And then when we're talking about flames, then we're going to go evolve and beyond. We're going to recover roofs with Class A fire-resistant materials in assembly as well. We're going to change the gutters if they are combustible to make sure they are non-combustible material. We're going to create enclosed eaves to stop flame intrusion up into the attic area. We're going to replace the wall cover to have a totally non-combustible material on the siding. We're going to install double pan, double temper windows. And we're also going to create fire breaks between any attachments that are around the homes like decks or attached structures. So again, these are just a sample, a few of the measures that our program is going to implement on the home and the property.
Thank you, Myra. So I know we have wanted to come and do this presentation a little bit sooner. I was kind of delaying things because I was really hoping that we would actually be in construction by now. But we've had some delays on the back end. But for the last year, we have been really busy. One of the first things FEMA recommended is to jump into the environmental clearances. And I really had no idea what I was getting into at the moment. But right off the bat, because these are federal dollars, we do have to go through federal procurement whenever we hire any vendors. So we actually went through two phases to hire our SMEs. So right off the bat, we hired a historical architect, a biologist, a botanist, and a Native American sacred lands researcher. And so we went through and we cleared 1,250 homes for construction or to move on to the next phase of construction. And that report took, took about three months. FEMA reviewed it. Took another three months to get it cleared and okayed. And that direct report went to the county to help us get our umbrella CEQA clearance. And so with the NEPA clearance, Myra actually starts that process whenever she is on site during the home assessment. And if we have anything that kind of springs up during the assessment, we then bring back our SMEs to continue doing that research just to make sure that we are protecting our environment. So with all of these clearances and all these conversations and all these SMEs that we have on site, it really, you know, proof's in the pudding. We are protecting our environment while we're making our community safer. So we're really, really thrilled to have all of these projects completed. We have worked diligently on making sure our platform for our homeowners to apply makes it nice and easy for them. So far, so good. We opened up the portal to 15 homeowners just so we could go through that training, make sure it was nice and easy for the homeowners. And we're ready to move forward with that. Myra has actually completed assessments on all 15 homeowners through this application process. We've done Q and A with CAL FIRE just to make sure that that assessment is really fine-tuned and ready to put together a scope of work for each home. And that's kind of where we're at with that process. We're putting together that scope of work so we can go out to bid to our contractors. This process sounds and looks really easy on paper. But from assessment to going out to bid, it could be anywhere between, I don't know, roughly 20 hours per home. So it is quite, quite the project. Speaking of contractors, we have gone out to federal procurement on two different occasions. And we are really excited to say we finally have a qualified pool of contractors, some locals, some outside of the area. In fact, we have five general Bs and seven C27s. So we're really excited to get them into contract. We do plan on opening up federal procurement again, probably in the next six months or so, so we can even have even a bigger qualified pool. So anytime we open up federal procurement, we announce it on the website, on the radio, in the newspaper. So all of our contractors know exactly what their process is. Our goal is to have hammer swinging, hopefully in the next 60 days. Next slide. So homeowners say, you're not going to be able to get to my house, maybe by the second year, maybe even by the third year. I didn't mention earlier, but this is a phased approach. Our first year, our deliverables are 25 homes. The second year, 175 homes. And by the third year, we'll have the 300 homes under our belt. So with us starting so slow, we still have homes that are sitting there ready to be worked on. But in the meantime, we always share this home retrofit guide with the community, with homeowners, anyone who will download it and look at it. But I always want to share it with everybody. If you guys are in the journey of making sure your home is safer, this is an excellent guide. It walks you through like a mini-assessment. It talks about some of the scope of work that Myra just mentioned. So I always encourage everyone to download it. And if you do have questions while you're working on your home, feel free to call our team. We're always here to answer any questions for everybody. Next slide. And that's it. In case anyone has any questions. Wow. I am, just a minute, we'll get to public comment. So you can have a seat when I'll open it up and you can come up then. I am so excited that we finally got to do this presentation. It's been almost two years. It was December of, it was December of 2021 when we had the field trip organized by CAL OES and CAL FIRE. And I know you two weren't on the team back then. But we had 10 different communities to look at. And we took CAL FIRE and OES around the county. We didn't, we weren't able to see all of them in one day. And it was their choice to pick this. It was what they were looking for. The other two pilots that came before us had, it was one in San Diego County and one in Shastie County, and they were different versions of this program. So that's how we got started. But my very first concern was, oh my gosh, this is a huge, huge task to implement. How are we going to do this? But CAL OES and, and CAL FIRE have been tremendous and handholding. They've hired consultants. We've had meetings every other week. I say we, I don't go to all of them. Every other week since December of 2021, making sure that when we finally get to implementation, we can handle it. And so it has been a tremendous lift. And I am so grateful for NCO to take this on. The other pilot programs had fire safe councils to assist them. I'm just going to say that we are surging past the other pilots. We haven't, we haven't started building yet, but we, they're very impressed with how much, how much you've done and how well you've been able to get us through the FEMA application, which was massive, and pulling together all of these details. So I'm just so proud to be part of this partnership. The whole idea is to harden communities. And we know that homes become fuel when a community is burning. And so this is why all the homes in a cluster are going to be worked on, whether or not you meet the income guidelines or not. Because we can't have homes that haven't been hardened in a cluster, or we don't have a hardened community. So, and that's why the vegetation management, is it a 10 or 20-year commitment that the property owner has to?
20.
20 years. They have to commit to managing their defensible space too. So it's, it's been very well thought out, but because we're the pilot, we've learned a lot, right? A whole lot.
Still learning.
Still learning. The other piece of this that hasn't been mentioned, there's a lot going on with home insurance in the state of California. And this community will also be eligible for the new changes that the Department of Insurance is making, which we still don't 100% understand. But what's happening here is being used for those programs. And then the assessments and the tours and being out on the ground with the high-level CAL FIRE and OES people walking us through and developing the tablets and the, or the software for the tablets. It's just, it really is incredible how much has gotten us to this point, and we haven't even started swinging hammers yet. So I don't know if you have anything else to add, by Sir Samson, about this process. I know you were really involved in the beginning. So just want to turn it over to you, just your thoughts.
Michael, that is.
Oh, okay. But I just, since you're a part of it. Oh, sure. Go ahead, Supervisor.
Just a technical question. It sounded like you had an umbrella CEQA clearance, like a cat X or a statutory exception. But you may still be doing a site-specific NEPA review. But this is kind of FEMA-driven. So is there any indication that a similar flexibility in the NEPA process will be forthcoming? That would give you umbrella coverage and not force you to do that site-specific review?
Not at this time. We do plan on, we have our SMEs on contract at any given moment. We still do have to do the nesting bird, bird surveys and clear the NEPA site-specific clearances. So that will be done as an as-needed basis.
Yeah, do want to commit, you know, just comment on all the hard work that's been done. NCO stepping up to be the partner. Remember the first couple of conversations we had about bringing this pilot program to Lake County? Obviously, very excited about it, but understanding the hard work that needed to be done. When we bring in these pilot programs, just like the, the task force that we have working on the North Shore at this point, it is to get that long-term goal of the entire county to be and have an opportunity for these home hardening projects all over our communities. It's not where you start. It's a long-term vision that you have to start so we can build this program. You know, the ultimate goal is to get through this three-year period. Hopefully, there will be funding coming down through FEMA to do the entire county and all the properties that need to be done in Lake County to, to continue us moving forward. It is exciting to see, even in the early conversations though, you could see that we were moving. All the organizations that were involved are moving a little bit faster than even some of the other ones that were chosen before us. You know, ultimately, when we swing the first hammer, that will be great. But I think ultimately, this will be down-the-road funding that's really going to have the opportunities to make that major impact. And the one thing that really excited me about the program was, if you're going to take the funding, that 20-year commitment on the vegetation work that needs to be done. We have learned a lot and just saw some more demonstrations that were done on the zero area being so important in our communities. It used to be we'd plant everything right up to the house, have your beautiful stuff. But things have changed now, and we've got to change with the times and the climate as it is changing. So excited about these opportunities, but also excited about the opportunities it's going to bring for the entire county, all the unincorporated areas, the cities, as we move forward, once we have successful projects done in the Riviera area. You know, thinking about brick, building resilience in communities. I don't know where this funding is going to come through FEMA, but the way it's working, I think it is going to be one of those large funding opportunities that we haven't been able to get into. So the long-term vision is there. I, I know it doesn't happen quick enough. We are having the insurance conversations now. But hopefully, this is going to be the community that they look to, one of the pilot programs here in Lake County, to really help us move forward. So excited about it. NCO always steps up and helps the community. We had another conversation just earlier on, you know, helping a veteran. Hopefully, don't know if that'll happen, but at least I saw those contacts happening. So CAL FIRE, CAL OES, all the partners that noticed the work that we're trying to do here in Lake County is really important. So Jessica, thank you for all the hard work. It's in your area. I know you've gone to a lot more meetings than I have on this issue. But it was great to be a part of that decision to bring it to Lake County. And like I said, it's not where you start. It's that we had to start somewhere. And we started in the Rivieras because every report we have gotten from CAL FIRE, when we looked at it, that was the place that is still left, that has not burned, that is the most vulnerable. And we talked about ingress egress, which we also got the grant for that in the area. So this is the beginning of the opening to help Lake County be a hardened Lake County. So thank you very much for the hard work.
Fantastic. Thank you.
I want to thank admin, you know, everyone that's worked on it, Terry. But it just didn't happen in a vacuum. These were conversations at the RRA. These were conversations at the Lake County Fire Safe Council, South Lake County Fire Council. So everybody that had this stuff on mind after the events we had gone through was how we were doing it. And there are neighboring communities, NAPA, Sonoma, that have gotten different brick grants for different things. We got the pilot program. So I know that's going to help us down the road, move forward and get the funding that we need to help all the communities. So that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. I don't know who was first over here. All right, go ahead.
I'll, the program itself is great. Hopefully, it could go countywide. I think there's a lot of issues in my mind of understanding the possibilities of making that happen. So you're dealing with a area that, I'm just going to say, it made me kind of chuckle that Riviera is mentioned as a vulnerable population, maybe a vulnerable area for fire. But the population itself is not vulnerable in the sense of how we speak of vulnerable populations. So I'm looking at like the median income. Hold on, can I finish?
Yeah, but I'll disagree with you.
So looking at the median income is 122 versus Clear Lake is 37. How do you translate that into a pilot program extending, especially when it's 80% homeownership versus 40% homeownership? There's a difference in how you engage with a different population when some of that population may not even be active or engaged to want to make those changes. So I, I love the idea of the home hardening. I just don't know how you expand it. Like this is a area and population that I think you will get more engagement and activity from. But I don't know how you circle around the lake with the same expectations. I'm wondering what your reporting data points are. And I hope that as you progress, you can come back to us and show us kind of what demographic are you touching? Are you touching the high end where that basically means that those who have money are receiving money to help their houses be better? And you are not able to help those who struggle to have it? Because I think that's important to me to better understand the rest of the population that is looking at this program in hopes that it can extend. But financially and logistically, it's going to be a struggle to make that expand further than the location you're in because that location has some ability to do these things already. This is helping to propel them in getting those things accomplished. So love the program. Hopefully, it does expand. I struggle to comprehend the future of it.
Well, I think, I'm sorry, Diana, but I'm just, I mean, we don't know what the future is because we've got to get through this program. We've got to build it out. And you, you don't just say the whole county is a program. You have to start with a specific area. And this is a vulnerable area. It may not be as vulnerable as some of our other communities, but there's a very high senior population here who cannot do the work on their homes, cannot leave their homes, has difficulty evacuating, has difficulty with connectivity. So it met the threshold for the income levels, which is low and moderate. And it's key that we have moderate in there because anyone, you know, it, these people struggle also with their homes. And so there, there is room in the program for a small amount of people who are above the income thresholds. But they have to pay, it's 10 or 15%?
10 to 25.
10 to 25%. So they do have to pay into it. They are going to receive some assistance because $40,000 is a lot for anybody to come up with. And it is based on the homeownership. There are a lot of rentals there too. So it was very complicated to put that all together, but that's how we got there. Yeah, I like to agree with that. And you know, prior to this project, I actually developed a work experience program for street homeless. So I'm used to, you know, working with the most vulnerable in our community. And while this isn't, you know, a similar vulnerability as some of those pockets of folks, like Jessica said, we are coming across seniors who cannot get up on their ladder. They cannot get up on their, their deck. They don't have the income to fix their rotted deck that could catch embers and cause their house to catch on fire. We actually had an AmeriCorps team going out every week doing defensible space. In fact, the county was so generous in donating supplies for those efforts. We're also seeing a lot of people who lost their homes in valley fire and other fires in our community. And there is an emotional vulnerability there. And so there's a lot of trauma in this community. And so I consider them vulnerable. And if we can go in and make them feel safer in their homes, or give them enough time to get out, or get enough time for the fire department to get there to put these small spot fires out before a big fire happens, that is vulnerable work, in my opinion. And like Moke and Jessica had said, you know, we have to start somewhere. And I am plan on making this program incredibly successful so we can open it in other vulnerable pockets of the, our communities.
So my last question, there's a 20-year timeline of keeping defensible space. Who's enforcing that and how can, is that something that's already kind of designed? Or is that something that you need to work on and bring back to us so we can better understand? Because I feel that's asking our code enforcement to look at, or are you going to go back to those houses and see if they're complying with that 20 years? Just kind of wanted to understand how that gets enforced and who's in charge of enforcing.
Yeah, no, that's an excellent question. Those are conversations that are still ongoing. We are currently putting together our tri-party agreement. So the homeowner actually agrees to go into this 20-year commitment. As far as enforcement goes, that's still a piece of the puzzle we're still figuring out. Well, I also just want to mention that
Well, I also just want to mention that the importance of layering these opportunities. So the AmeriCorps kids showed up and they were willing to go out and do this work, but they didn't have the tools. So I used my discretionary funds to buy a whole bunch of tools, um, to get out there and help those people. And then we just, the Fire Safe Council just got a $500,000 grant to help, um, homeowners or probably renters as well, across the county to help with defensible space. Um, so there, I just want to mention that this is just one program, but we're layering and leveraging everywhere we go. And that is countywide. So we just found that out, um, I think a week or two ago. So we'll be figuring out how that program works to anywhere, because we know that all these people are struggling. We know we have a high population of seniors. A lot of times people will move into their vacation home that they owned for generations. By the time they become a senior and they're on a fixed income, that house is really old and needs a lot of upkeep and they're just not able to do it. And so these are the, all the things that we have to be contemplating as we move forward.
And I'd also like to mention this, this program is not just geared towards homeowners. Obviously the homeowner is the one who has to apply, but if somebody has a rental in this particular area, they're welcome to, to apply for this program. So these folks who are renting, um, can also be a participant. And we notice a lot of the renters are people who have lost their homes in fires. So again, we go back to that emotionally vulnerability. They are welcome to apply and make sure that they can get these retrofit measures done.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes. There we go. I appreciate this presentation. Uh, this pilot program is a tool that will help lower the risk of homes being affected by the hazard of wildfire. Um, if we could extend this program eventually countywide, um, it legitimizes the argument that we should be charged by insurance companies in accordance with risk versus hazard. Um, with that being said, the fact that those who'll be partaking in this program enhance the survivability, uh, that insurance companies should be taken into consideration. Um, I mean, for example, if they're charging by hazard, shouldn't they be charging more towards people that are driving in the city? I mean, if you see every car, they have dents. I mean, this is frustrating because we have all of these problems with insurance companies. And so, um, you know, nonetheless, I just think this is a good start. Um, you know, sorry to go on that tangent. I just, I, I think it just legitimizes our argument that, um, you know, we have homes that are a low risk, even though there, there is the imminent threat of a, of a wildfire. And so, um, I think it should be taken into consideration. And so I, I like programs like this because it gives us a chance to at least show we're doing something. So, yeah, just want to say that.
Thanks. Okay. I will now open it up for the public. Do we have anyone in the chambers that would like to come up and ask a question? And you can state your name and have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Elaine Brown. Um, FEMA, I'm just wondering, is it local contractors that will be served only, like the local people here, the contractors? Will they be the ones that get the, the bids?
Yes.
The just local?
No.
Oh, you have some outside?
Yeah, absolutely. So with it being a competitive bid process, whenever we open up procurement, anyone from any area of California, even outside, if they so wish, can actually, uh, apply to be a qualified contractor in this program.
All right. It just doesn't service our community here. That's one of the checkpoints. Um, one of the best ways of having, uh, significant loss of property is having a full-force, uh, fire department. I know over at the Riviera across from the market, last week I was pounding on the doors of that fire department.
Yeah, but let's keep the comments to the home.
It is for this.
Okay.
It's fire department. It's a county issue. And I'm looking in there, there's one old fire, maybe from the seventies in one bay, and then someone's pickup truck and no one answers a door. I was happy to see West Coast in there cleaning up and a new one, one of those.
We're talking about the home hardening program?
I'm talking about the fire. I'm talking about fires.
We're not talking about the fire department.
Goes back to what FEMA could do with their $40,000. $40,000 could be half of, of an income for really doing something for this community, which is buying people that can fight these fires. And I know the one at Hill looks like it's, doesn't have a flag flying, which is a sign of distress that maybe people aren't working at the fire communities where those people can go out and actively fight these fires instead of the rich, the elite being given this $40,000 that we don't really have oversight on to see how that's being used. So I would really recommend the board as a county to look into your fire services because over at Riviera, they had one old, in one port of those four different components, four different places where they didn't have fire trucks. And the man's name was White, that it was on the placard. I imagine those men did a lot of work to make sure that this community was safe. And there's one old truck in that four station, um, place. And I really want this community to thrive and survive. And it's people's boots on the ground, men and women who are actively fighting fires, not some FEMA thing. Thank you.
Okay. And I'll just remind you that Kelseyville Fire District did try and pass a measure, failed, but maybe you could look into that. This is, we, there's so many different funding pots. We, we don't all just squish them together. These are specific programs designed for specific tasks, and this is the proactive work of hardening communities. So come on up, Joan.
Joan Moss, I have many questions. During the valley fire, I went and interviewed with FEMA. And I was told that I would have to pay the money back that FEMA loans me. At the time I was fairly decrepit and low income and single and a mother, and I was getting help from my family. So until I see it in black and white, I agree with Bruno. Jessica, if you've been meeting every other week with the people who are, who are forming this, I, I ask and require you to notify the community that that's what you are doing.
Yes, it's in my calendars.
And there was a family I was helping and a local sheriff was making all these demands on this man who was a homeless, a little bit, no, he was, he had a home, but he was a little bit, um, he was a Vietnam veteran with a very confused mind, very brilliant, but very confused. And I was trying to help him and, excuse me?
Joan, this is about the program?
I'm talking.
I want to keep it focused on the agenda item, which is the home hardening program. So if you could just tie it back in, that would be great.
Yes, thank you. Please stop interrupting. People will come up to speak. I would like to say that this man had written my friend a notice and he hadn't followed his own directions. We went to the homeowners. There are many people, but I want to see it in black and white that, because at times FEMA does charge and doesn't ask for money back. And at times FEMA doesn't, doesn't ask for money back. I want to see who's running the program. I want to see it in black and white so the homeowners feel that they are being told the truth. Thank you.
We will have a tri-party agreement. Nobody is committed to this program until they get to that point. So they apply, we review their application, we do the assessment, we go through that process. But again, no homeowner is committed to the program until they see that tri-party agreement. And they can see in black and white that FEMA is not going to be requiring for these, these funds to be reimbursed.
Yeah. And we've, you and FEMA and Cal Fire and Cal OES have been putting out press releases that describe the entire process. I think the first one went out, um, spring of 2022?
Yeah.
Is when the first press release went out. Every other week, these count, these are on my calendars. I announce them every other week. I don't always go to them. I can't always make them, but I have been a hundred percent transparent with those meetings since the beginning.
And I'd also like to reiterate that, again, every FEMA grant is different. And again, with this being a pilot program, this is really one of a kind. So, um, I'd also like to remind folks that this is a local program led. They are giving us the money. We are dispersing it, you know, via their guidelines, but this is a local program.
Correct. Thank you. Do we have anyone else in the chambers who has a question about the home hardening program or comment? Can I check the Zoom room? We do have one hand up, phone 7257. If you would like to unmute, state your name. And if you have questions or comments about the home hardening program, go ahead.
Hi, is this me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you so much. This is Bart La.
Bart, we, we can't hear you now. Your phone cut out a little bit. Do you, okay, I think we've lost her. And are you back Bart?
I'm trying. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you now.
Oh, thank you so much. Uh, the manual sounds fantastic. Please distribute it in the Riviera. Please, uh, come to the HOA meetings occasionally, Supervisor Paeska, and tell them about the program and what's going on. Not everybody understands how beneficial this is. And the HOA has actually been, uh, a, a little bit hostile, some people. And, um, it would be great to have more information directly to the HOA and to the neighborhoods themselves, uh, like the manuals, so that we can be educating ourselves about best practices and, uh, doing what we can in the meantime as we apply. And, um, it, it hasn't been clear about the application process, and I hope that it can become more clear, um, uh, and easier to do. It hasn't been easy to do. Thank you.
Thank you Bart.
Hi Bart, this is Deanna. We've spoken a few times. We are actually hosting, uh, regular meet and greets. So the homeowners can come and meet the team. Jessica was at our last meet and greet. So we have various different partners there you can chat with. Even some of our contractors showed up, so you can meet them. Um, we are setting the next date and we'll have that out in our monthly newsletter. I know you're a recipient of, so, um, and I'll make sure to, to share that with our board as well, if they're welcome to come. Um, but we're always happy to sit down with you Bart and answer any questions that you have in order for there not to have an unclear message. This is not a program of the HOA. So these meet and greets are held at our NCO offices. We do meet with the HOA more than once a month to keep them in the loop with any updates of the program and just to kind of lead them in with discussions of the homeowners. But if there's anything unclear, they're always, um, guided to, to come back to us. So again, um, feel free to give us a call or reach out Bart.
Madam Chair, I have to step out for an important phone call, but I'll be right back.
Okay, thank you. Um, and yeah, so I know NCO has been present at those HOA meetings, um, and your meet and greets are really effective and it's really nice to meet you. You have a long list of people that are already interested in the program, but I think the next step is when we start to see these, this program roll out and people are going to get excited about what they see. And a lot of, that will answer a lot of questions too. So it's just the next phase, when we just keep on rolling and everyone can, um, can share in the excitement. And then I think we're, we're going to see a lot more people interested in signing up.
Absolutely.
And we're really grateful for the early adopters who are super interested in getting started. Supervisor Spatia.
Just a last question. There was a public comment, and I know that during your presentation, you did mention that you have a mix of interest of contractors, local and outside of the local area. Uh, I know that we offer like a, um, local preference with like, uh, if you're within range of 10%. Do you have something like that to see if we can get more of our local contractors involved versus getting outbid by contractors outside?
I will say I have been raised in this area my whole life. I love Lake County. I always want to keep our dollars local. I actually came from the Chamber of Commerce and really love our small, you know, business owners. However, following FEMA guidelines and making sure that it's a competitive bid process, we do not have any preference for local contractors.
It's not that you do not have, you're not allowed to have.
Correct. Yes.
Just wanted to check in.
Well, and I will add that again, it maybe, I know personally, some of the local contractors were hesitant to get involved because it seems very complicated and maybe it's not enough money and, you know, how is this all going to work out? But once things start rolling again and we're ramping up 25 houses the first year, 175, then 300 year three. So once we start to roll this out and people are going to see that it's not as maybe complicated as they thought, then we're hoping to bring on more contractors and you're going to open up the, um, procurement again and, and that build that list out because each one has to be bid out.
Absolutely. And in fact, like our strategy is to do five homes at any given time. So incentivizes those contractors to be able to come and bid out five homes at a time. $250,000, our scope of work is fairly simple. They can kick out these five homes in a number of weeks really. And so, and they'll all be within a square mile radius of each other. So they're subcontractor and we allow subcontractors. That's not something FEMA grant normally allows. And so we, we feel really lucky that way. So say we throw out a bid, a contractor can bid the roof, they can bid the gutters, they can bid the defensible space and keep it all in-house. So we really feel that that's, uh, a valuable tool for our local contractors. And so, again, we are, uh, the scope of work is, is fairly simple. We put it on a document that makes it even simpler for them. Alls they have to do is verify length and width and whatnot, and then do a quick walkthrough, throw us our bid and, and off we go. So we're trying to make it really nice and easy for our contractors. And, and like Jessica said, we're really hoping once hammer swing, everyone's going to get really excited. I mean, this is $20 million we can keep within our community or within our local contractors. And like I said, we do have contractors that are outside of the area, but are they going to want to drive here every day? I don't know. That's up to them, but we do have to, to offer it to everybody.
Okay. You want to come up and give another comment about the program? Okay.
I'm going to talk about the valley fire and the fact that the Prather Brothers came back after they evacuated their homes.
Hey Joan, we really have to, we have to keep this.
And they saved our house.
Okay, we have to keep this.
We never know what a fire will bring.
Joan, Joan, this is about the home hardening program. You've already come up once.
I am a homeowner and I am concerned about what happened at the valley fire. We never know in the valley fire, other firefighters were other places. We didn't have enough firefighters. They kicked all their.
Joan, you're way off topic. You're way off topic. And you're being disrespectful to everybody in the chambers.
And saved our houses. Thank you.
Sit down. Thank you. This has to be about the program. Okay, thank you.
Elaine Brown. So $40,000, how is that distributed? It's $20 million. Who, how is that, is it, and you said there's five homes. Is that $40,000 over the 20 years? How does that work?
So the $40,000 goes towards the retrofit measure, the, the retrofit measures and defensible space that is identified during the home assessment. So all of those dollars would be spent at the same time.
So how can someone like we, the people, go and look and see exactly how one home's expenditures of that $40,000 is spent?
So during the tri-party agreement, it actually lays out the full scope of work. And the tri-party agreement is between the contractor, the homeowner and North Coast Opportunities. So everything is transparent to the homeowner and the contractor.
What about the, the US citizen who's, who FEMA is a part of? Who get, how do we get to see how that's spent?
So you want to see the contracts of these other homeowners? Is that what?
I want to know each individual house, how that $40,000 was spent for each individual home.
So on our website, we actually have a list of the retrofit measures and you're welcome to go on there and look at them. They're all very much the same. We won't, we don't go out of that scope of work. In fact, FEMA has a very set standard of minimum quality of standards for each scope of work. So I'm happy to share that with you. In fact, it's still on our website and you can go in there and look at all of the items that we'll be working on.
So can the US citizens see like the receipts given for that contractor, that specific contractor for that specific home?
Well, we haven't started spending yet. Construction hasn't started, but I'm sure if that's a requirement of FEMA, then we would be posting those publicly.
What if that's the, what if US citizens want that to be seen?
At this time, that's unknown.
All right. I'm just concerned because we, like, there can be discretionary funds. Things can be spent any way they wish to spend them. And I don't want to see that with that $40,000 when we have people that need jobs to fight fires.
So this program is run through a nonprofit, North Coast Opportunities. We do have a monthly board meeting where we do announce all our financials, and that is open to the public. I'm happy to send you that invite if you're interested.
I'm more interested on each individual house where that $40,000 is being spent.
Well, with the tri-party agreement, that is a very HIPAA compliant document, so that would not be open to the public, but I'm sure we can discuss this further.
And to the board, that is a concern. Thank you.
Okay, it doesn't look like we have any more public comment. I don't see any hands up in here or in the Zoom room. So I will close public comment, and this is a presentation. Really thank you both for
Thank you all.
Everything that you've done. This is an incredible opportunity, and this is going to be a total game changer for this community. And we are, we just, we know this is going to be the first of many projects. So thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you again.
And we'll take a short break. We'll come back at 11:15. I think Supervisor Crandall will be able to join us by then. Thanks.